And then again, we have services and on the county side of the services, we uh pay out some of our largest expenses are for MA Medical and MA Form Out. And then as we look at the total, we spent sixty-eight million dollars in the County General Fund. We had a seventy-two million dollar budget, which leaves over four-point-three million dollars. And um, we had like six percent of that budget left. And then as we look down in the uh lower right-hand corner at that table, the theme here is we're looking at the twenty-twenty versus twenty-twenty-one actuals. And we can see um, we only spent like one percent more, so we had like eight, eight-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars more than we spent in twenty-twenty-one than twenty-twenty. Any questions on uh information in the County General Fund? Okay. And then over on uh page eight in the report, Debbie, she kind of talked about the table that showed like we have a view of our twenty-nine different funds. And um, the top section includes uh all our tax levy funds and these are funds um, there's ten funds that have a mill levy associated with them. And then the bottom nineteen funds are are special revenue funds or enterprise funds. And uh looking at revenues on the left-hand side of the page, it's a good thing if we're around a hundred percent or over a hundred percent. You can see most of the funds there are are around or over a hundred percent. And then with expenditure-wise, um, it's a good thing when we're under a hundred percent. And you see most of the funds are either at a hundred percent or or below a hundred percent. And looking at expenditures, um, looking at all the funds, we see we spent three-hundred-and-sixty-nine million dollars. And that number is in on the right-hand side of the page in the orange boxes with the expenditures. And we so we ended up having like twenty million dollars left in what we budgeted, which is like five percent of the budget. Any questions over any of that information?
Commissioner Bino?
Thank you, Mayor. So looking at budget to actual, it looks to me like our projections came very, very close to being correct and accurate. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, I think that's fair for the whole finance team, uh revenue side and expenditure side. We did come in very close.
Thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah, um, this closer. Yeah, thank you for uh going through this, um, sorry, to our finance team. And I know this is all kind of short notice from what I understand. Where does our ARPA money and kind of some of that one-time money that won't be here, you know, in a few years? Where does that show up in this budget, particularly on the revenue side?
Kathleen or Debbie, you want to answer that? I I I think we're, I don't want to.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
So the the ARPA revenue that was allocated to us from the federal government is a grant. Um, and it's in a grant fund. And the state does not require us to certify uh budgets for grant funds. So the grant funds are not included here. That's why. Now, the amount that's um, that was calculated as revenue replacement, that is included. And it's included throughout all of the funds, um, depending on how much revenue they lost during twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one. So, so it's spread out across all these funds.
So then, if I may, Mayor, so then it may be fair to say that the numbers that we're looking at right now, when it says over a hundred percent collected, that could be also, right, a part of that percentage could be ARPA funding that is there from revenue replacement that would not normally be there if that money was not there. Is that fair?
Yes, that's that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions from our commissioners? Uh Ms. Foundation, is, I would like for you to please get a copy just in relation to Commissioner Davis's request. What what those ARPA funds, those expenditures look like, how they played into this overall budget? And just make, if you can update this uh presentation that you've given our commissioners in a way that better reflects that, that breakdown. Um, when you say that uh ARPA funds are pretty much throughout what we're looking at, it'd be good if we had uh kind of an idea of of what that looked like and how that played into the overall budget.
Uh, yeah, I've uh I've presented that in the past and I'm happy to to present it again. Yep.
Okay. What is uh, as of the end of fourth quarter, what is our, what's our balance sheet look like? Do we have a budget surplus? What does that look like? How much does the unified government have in its bank um today as far as cash on hand?
Well, if you go to page one of the report, is the consolidated general fund table. Yes, so, so Debbie mentioned earlier that the consolidated general fund, sometimes we call it combined general fund. It's the addition or of three general funds. One's the city general fund, one's the county general fund. And then there's the, what we call consolidated city-county parks general fund. And the combination of those three is the combined general fund. And general funds, you know, from an accounting standpoint, all the revenues that go into the general fund are not restricted. And so they can be spent um as, as the the Board of Commissioners decides. Any other revenues that have restrictions are in those special revenue funds. So if you, you know, if you go to the very last page, you'll see all kinds of funds here. Most of those have restrictions. The only one that isn't restricted is the city, the county, and the consolidated parks general fund. Those are, so don't have statutory restrictions, just so you know. But um, gosh, what was, oh, so we were talking about where we are with the general fund. Oh, do you have any more questions about that? Okay. Um, yeah, so if you go to the table on the first page, it has kind of a blue banner on it there, you can see, a navy blue. That's the combined general fund. And it shows what the budget was in twenty-twenty and then how much was spent. And that just provides some context. And then over to the farther, and the columns farther to the right are the twenty-twenty-one figures for how much was budgeted. And it's very summary nature, so it has all the revenues and then expenditures. And then it kind of has a net of transfers in and out, um, kind of nets them together. So, so the revenues for the consolidated city general fund were budgeted at two-hundred-and-forty-six million dollars. And what actually came in was two-hundred-and-forty-five million dollars. So we we were just short about half a percent from what the budget was expected. And then on the expenditure side, we budgeted two-hundred-and-thirty-five million dollars. And we received, or we spent, sorry, two-hundred-and-twenty-five mil- or two-hundred-and-twenty-six million. And so we um basically spent about four percent of the budget, or four percent less than we budgeted. Now, I do want to um just point out one thing is that, and not to confuse everyone, but uh, the bond documents require that we have a ten-million-dollar debt reserve. They're in the bond documents, that's called the annual appropriation clause. And um, it's a little confusing, so, and we never have to use that ten-million-dollar reserve because all of the economic development projects are um generating enough revenue to pay for their own debt service. So as a result, we take out that ten-million dollars in the budget column in order to make it uh more easy for you all. So just so you know, if you were going to match it up with the budget document, it's not, it's about ten million less than what you see in the budget document. Okay? So, moving on.
Yeah. Commissioner Stites. So you have Commissioner Stites, District Seven. So you said that it was uh two-forty-six budgeted, actual came in was two-forty-five, which results in uh half a percent or equivalent to about one million dollars. But when I drop down to bullet point number two, that includes twenty-one million dollars of ARPA money, is that correct?
Uh, both numbers include ARPA money. Yeah.
Both numbers.
Yeah, both the budget and the allocation.
We budgeted ARPA dollars in there at that amount?
Yes. Yeah.
All right.
And they all came in as we budgeted.
Okay.
For the most part. Right, so then, so then um, so dropping down to the co- the row that's called net change, net change is the difference between the revenues and the expenditures. So revenues come in and then you spend them going out. And so one is a positive, one's a negative because it goes out. And the difference between the two is what net change is. So we budgeted that we were going to bring in ten-million dollars more in revenue than we were going to spend. You can see that column there, ten-point-four million. And and that is because, frankly, that is because of ARPA, uh the ARPA revenue replacement, because the commission decided to hold off on deciding how to spend the the ARPA revenue replacement until there was more time to discuss that as part of this upcoming budget. But instead, over in the actuals column, you can see that the difference between revenues and expenditures was fifteen-point-seven million dollars. So that was roughly about uh fifty-five million dollars more than we expected. And that extra money goes into the fund balance. So what does that mean? It's sort of like a your ending checking account at the end of the month. That's what fund balance is. And um, so, so as you can see, we started the year with thirty-one million dollars in fund balance. And we're ending, we expected to end the year with forty-one million dollars. But because of the uh, because of the underspending, we ended the year with forty-six million dollars in fund balance in the city, city-county and parks general fund, just those three funds. And the reason we only show the fund balance amounts for just the general fund in this report is because um we don't, we, it's too much information to provide all the information for all the other funds. So this is, this is the fund that we often really focus on. And so that's why it's, it's just this fund here.
Commissioner Johnson?
And I did want to point out, just one more thing, I'm sorry. Um, so the, the ending, so, given the, given the forty-six million, that, this is cash, by the way, it's cash basis, called budgetary basis from an accounting standpoint. It is not modified accrual basis. Uh, modified accrual basis accounting will be completed in May when, or June, when we present the CAFER or the uh, the annual financial report to you. These are just cash budgetary basis numbers. But um, to, all of you um are used to talking about the fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. And if you, if I uh adjust this number for modified accrual, it, it equates to twenty-seven percent of total expenditures. Whereas our target's around sixteen or seventeen percent. So, because we're trying, trying to target two-thirds, or I'm sorry, two months of operating expenditures, so. Now, you understand this is sort of a one-time blip or increase in the percentage because we, we brought in all that um ARPA revenue replacement. And so, you know, those funds will be under your purview to to allocate as part of the twenty-twenty-three or twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three budget. So, so you know, in the coming months, you'll be um deciding how to spend those one-time funds. And uh, so, and then the fund balance percentage will will go down, so.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, you had asked for um the balance sheet for, for uh this period of time. And even what has been explained to us, it's only a small part of the balance, our overall balance sheet. So is it that you want to see the ca- how much cash, or do you want to see the entire balance sheet? Current assets, current liabilities, current uh liability, current assets, current long-term assets, current liability, long-term liabilities? I'm talking about it just from a general gap standing and then our net worth. Are you wanting the full balance sheet or just the cash portion?
I'd, I'd like for, to be provided to the commission, the full balance sheet. I'd like to know where we're at exactly um with everything. If you're going to talk budgets, I think it's appropriate that you give this commission all the information. So as we move forward through the budget cycle, they can make informed decisions, including the ARPA funds, what that looks like, and the appropriate breakdowns. Um, so it provides more clarity on this budget. And help me out is what, were you done? I'm sorry, Commissioner. Help me out and walk me through this. I know that the commission last year approved a four-hundred-and-twenty-million-dollar budget, or close to. How does that pay into the conversation we're having now? When you're talking about the consolidated general fund balance and in the budget? I just, I don't see four-hundred-and-twenty million dollars reflected here. But uh, maybe I'm overlooking some of it, you can just walk me through that.
Yeah, so if you go to the last page, the last page is the listing of all the twenty-nine funds. And at the very bottom, you'll see three-hundred-and-ninety-three million dollars, which is the total budget. And um, that does not include, again, the ten-million annual debt appropriation clause. So if you add in another ten million, um, you'll get to over the four-hundred-million that you're, that you're referring to. So the, so all of these funds are restricted except for the city, county, and parks um consolidated general fund, funds. I'm sorry.
That was four-twenty, right? Am I off on that, that number that was approved last year?
Two different budget years. The budget we adopted last summer is the budget year we're in right now. And that, we're looking here at twenty-one. That's where I think those numbers are different. Yeah, that could be too. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, oh yeah, yeah. Yeah, but this is the whole budget rate, yeah. It, I did want to um follow up on Commissioner um Johnson's comment about the balance sheet. So, so the balance sheet is um the, a statement that reflects all the assets of an entity less all the liabilities of the entity. And then the difference between the assets and the liabilities is the fund balance. And so then there's the income statement, which is the one you all look at. That's what this is. And it matches revenues minus expenditures with fund balance. And those two fund balances are the same. So the, the balance sheet is a, is something that's done on a modified accrual basis, not on a cash basis. And so that's up, that is being prepared as part of the external audit that we're currently doing and won't be available for another few months, so.
Commissioner Johnson?
But can't, don't you all produce, if you produce quarterly income statements, you can't produce a quarterly balance sheet?
So our current financial system does not allow us to prepare balance sheets in the middle of the year. But with the new financial system that we're currently putting in place, we will be able to produce those, and we're very excited about that.
Commissioner Stites? Stites District, Stites District Seven. So what you guys were saying, clarifying the, we're, we're at the four-oh-three. So it sounded like four-oh-three included the ten million. The previous year was twenty-twenty, right? And that was at four-twenty, and that included the ten million also? So am.
No, the, I think they're saying that the current fiscal year we're in right now, which is twenty-twenty-two, may have been tw- four-twenty, I don't know offhand, so. Yeah. This is.
Sure. So was the, so was there one year of budget that was reduced of, in approval, overall budget number? No?
No, so are you talking about that, the debt, annual debt appropriation clause?
Oh, no. No. Okay.
I'm sorry, I believe that Commissioner Stites is saying the mayor referenced a budget that we passed that was four-hundred-and-twenty million dollars.
Okay.
And we passed that budget last summer, you are absolutely correct. But these numbers do not reflect that at all in any way because we are looking at the twenty-twenty.
Twenty-one.
And twenty-twenty-one budget numbers here. And that number, the four-hundred-and-twenty million, is for the twenty-twenty-two budget, the year that we're currently in. Does that make sense? Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Markley?
Thanks, Mayor, and I appreciate this information. And um, I appreciate the balance sheets when we get to them. But to be honest, we were told we didn't need to worry about re- pre-reviewing any budget documents, that we were not going to have that level of discussion today, that we were having a visioning session. So I'm here to have a visioning session. This is great information, I'm sure we would have gotten it eventually. But this is a lot for us to take in while we're sitting here and while the folks that are here for the visioning session are sitting in the audience. So, again, I'm just, uh, it's great information, but that's not what we were told we were doing here today. And if we were going to do this today, we should have had this information in advance so that we could review it, so we could kind of figure out these numbers.
Thank you. This is just a precursor and trying to answer some questions as well. So as we move through the budget cycle, the, the whole point is to get as much detailed information based on the questions today so we could be better, better prepared to have those conversations, so.
Commissioner McCann?
Thank you. But Kathleen, this, this report was going to be presented as a function of the April Fourth Economic Development and Standing Committee meeting. So we're getting it ten days earlier than we would otherwise have gotten.
Uh, that's correct, yeah.
Okay.
Well.
And and for those.
It was going to be available tomorrow when it gets published, the agenda.
Correct, but we were going to actually go through it in the manner that we did here tonight at the April Fourth Economic and Economic Development and Finance Standing Committee. And um, for the benefit of those people who aren't on that committee, which I know is half of us, the way our committee structure is, and, and that may be something strategically we want to think about in the future, is the structure of those committees. But uh Kathleen and her staff bring a report very much like this. The only thing that changes really is the numbers every quarter. So we get a quarterly report, first, second, third, and final. And those of us, you know, who've been on the committee for a while, just generally turn to the back page because it is a beautiful summary of how we're doing up or down. And they color code income if we're green, if we're over budget, and expense green if we're under budget, so they even color coded for us. So I do appreciate the fact that they bring these materials to us on a routine basis uh for our consideration, so thank you.
It's also on the finance department website, along with our investment reports. Just, we're, we try to be very transparent, so.
Commissioner Johnson?
My colleague, Mr. Commissioner McCurney hit exactly where I was going with this, so I yield the floor.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, the next part of the presentation, Ms. Foundation?
You have to enable it. Oh, okay. All right, so um, I've been asked to put together the mayor's recommendations for the twenty-twenty-three budget. There's a variety of items that he would like to share with all of you. Oh, good. And so, we want to just talk about those briefly. And we have been working with Cheryl, or the interim county administrator, and I have been working with mayor's office on uh developing these items. So, first off, uh, the first bullet that in, most importantly, is that um the proposal is to set the property tax mills at the revenue-neutral rate, which means we would not hold a hearing to exceed it. And um, I have provided amongst all of you several weeks ago details of how that impacts various funds that are tax levy funds. But I also have a slide that summarizes that, so we'll get to that in a minute. Okay? The second item is um a, an idea to create separate classifications for the BPU pilot, which is for water and for electric um utility. The pilot, which is a payment in lieu of taxes, is a um determined based on the gross revenues that BPU generates for their respective utilities. And right now, the percentage, as you all know, is eleven-point-nine percent of the gross revenues. And um, and uh, so the thought is that if we were to, to create separate classifications, where one classification would be residential and the other would be non-residential or for commercial and industrial, that then there would be more flexibility with the Board of Commissioners for all of you to decide how much of a percentage of the gross revenues you would like to um charge for the franchise tax. So this is actually a franchise tax, so we should talk it about, talk about it as if it's a franchise tax. But um, just determine whether you want to differentiate the rate in which you charge for those two respective classifications. So um, we are going to be providing a lot more detail on that uh or this idea at next, the next commission meeting on March thirty-first. So next, next Thursday, all right? This, the third item is to take a sales and use tax measure to the voters for the August primary. And um, I do have a little bit, I have more details on that for sure on this slide, uh, the following slide. So give me a chance to go through that and I, and then we can answer questions about that in a moment, okay? And then the third is an I, an area that our county, uh, our interim county administrator is um leading the effort, which is to conduct organizational and alignment analysis of UG departments to find government efficiencies. And so this is the piece where we're going to identify what expenditures or service levels that are, that we're providing throughout the UG in order to match um cuts in our current budget to match the, the drop in revenues that are proposed in the first two items. So these are the, really, you know, the, the biggest recommendations that will impact our budget discussions in the coming months. And so um, let me go, take you through some, a little bit more of the details. And then we can come back to the slide if you have any comments. So the revenue-neutral rate calculation, this is a slide that shows how it's determined, how much of a reduction in the mill would result in order to collect the same amount of property tax revenue that we collected in this current fiscal year. So of course, we're talking about next year's budget. So this year's current property tax is levy, is that first column. And it's totals, it totals a hundred-and-ten million dollars, right? And those are the mill rates that we currently have in place, twenty-twenty-two. If, and given the fact that um, the Matt, Matt Willard, our, our county appraiser, has provided some preliminary estimates and it's, and through our review, we've determined that the assessed value, so the assessed value for the county is increasing by twelve percent for next budget year. And so it's going to result in quite a bit more revenue to us. In fact, you can see at the bottom that we're anticipating it will be a hundred-and-twenty-three-point-eight million dollars instead of what we're, we're anticipating collecting today, which is a hundred-and-ten, right? So that's a difference of roughly thirteen million dollars. And so if we were to um collect the same amount that we're currently collecting today, then we would have to reduce all these mills by a certain amount, which is what that fourth column is. Those are all the reduc- reduced mills for each of the levy funds. And you see, there's quite a few funds that are dependent on this property tax. There's the county general fund, elections, parks, aging, mental health, health department, developmental disability. Developmental Disabilities, and then the two debt service funds. And so that fifth column is the amount of revenue reduction. So in order to stay at the same level as what we're currently collecting. And then the, the last column is just the number of mills. So the result is that we would, we would not collect roughly 13.6 million that we would have if we'd not changed the mills. And the mill reduction would be about 8.5 across all these levy funds.
Commissioner McCarron.
Thank you, Mayor. These are important discussions. These are discussions that need to be had. But what we're looking at here is a strategy level discussion. And I'm going to piggyback on what Commissioner Markley had said earlier. I thought that our purpose here tonight was to set a vision, to set the strategic vision for where we're going. That then informs our strategy discussions. And we ask ourselves, how do these tools help us achieve our strategic vision? So I feel in some ways as if while this is very important information, we've gotten the cart ahead of the horse here because we haven't talked about our vision for what we want to accomplish in, for, and by our community, which then informs how we execute these strategies.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. So I just wanted to briefly go over the next four or five slides to talk a little bit about the sales tax measure. So as you all probably know, there are two options available to us. There's a special purpose sales tax, which has a sunset of 10 years. And then a general purpose, which can go indefinitely. So those are, you know, two sets of options. And each of those options have a certain amount of room for increasing the sales tax. What, what we're considering or what we're recommending is, I'll go real quickly here. So to the, is a temporary half penny, which is a special dedicated sales tax of half a cent for 10 years. And the purpose of this is to generate roughly $196 million, that's an estimate, of course, in sales tax in order to pay for a variety of facility and some road improvement projects. And so I, I'm not going to really go over this in detail, but I did want to give you, I'm going to quickly show you, these are some of the examples of projects that we're being, that are being considered. For example, reconstruction of fire stations across the Kansas City, Kansas, Fire and Police Joint Training Center, Fire Patrol Stations, I'm sorry, Police Patrol Stations, Fire Equipment and Technology Enhancements, Parks and Recreation Spray Parks, Recreation Center, and a Recreation Facility, a new transit center and as long, as well as a central UG Services Building in Midtown, and then a variety of street and roads and reconstruction, street and road reconstruction projects. And the key point is, here, I want to go this way. The key point is that this, these projects would cover across, you know, the entire Kansas City, Kansas area. So the, in order to, and of course, we're going to bring this forward, as I mentioned, to you at, at a future date for you all to consider more in depth. But this is very preliminary, what we're presenting. But if we were to go with this sales tax measure for the August primary, we would need, we talked with the election commissioner and we would need to introduce the idea at the EDNF Committee on May 9th. And so, so we only have about a month and a half or so to, to really get going on this. And that's, that's the sales tax measure details that I wanted to provide.
Commissioner Stites.
This way?
Yeah, I was just looking at Chuck Stites, District 7. I was looking at that seven. It kind of stands out there all by itself, like there's nothing for District 7. I don't see anything in Edwardsville.
Well, the, this is a Kansas City, Kansas sales tax. I mean, that's what we're, we're thinking, contemplating is a Kansas City, Kansas sales tax.
So is that.
That, that is.
Number that's there above the seven, that's not in Kansas City, Kansas.
Yeah, I know. So that is in the county and actually our legal council's kind of looking at that to see whether we can spend money in, in the county on, with the city sales tax. So that is a question that we, we're still exploring. So this is all very preliminary.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner McCann.
Could you go back to the very first slide, please?
Okay, this one?
No, the one where it says that, that, that it wasn't something that said this is what the mayor wanted.
Oh, oh, sure. Okay.
Mayor's recommendation or something like that?
Yeah, okay.
Mayor's budget. This will be my 18th budget. And I've never, ever seen anything like that, anything close to that. Because I thought we were, as a commission, we're supposed to sit here tonight and talk about what's personal to you, and 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 me, and not have the mayor tell us on the very first meeting that we had what he wants. Because we didn't get to say what we want. You know, I, I, our conversation last year was, and you remember this, I said, we need to tell staff to lower the mill at least one mills. And all of us remember that we're on the, the commission at the time. I want to be able to throw my thoughts in on what's important to me. You know, and, and Mayor, I, I, I'm frustrated. I'm frustrated because this isn't what I want. I want all of us to take a piece of the pie and, and spread that monies out in our districts where we think is, is most necessary. But when it comes in like that, that doesn't work for me. It'll never work for me. You know, I've already talked, I've talked to people about the, the sales tax and stuff like that. And some of the conversations that, that have been going around town, you, you give this presentation to people, but you didn't give us the opportunity to share our opinion. And I represent District 5, and I'm going to represent District 5 until I'm completely done running and they say they don't want me. And this does not represent District 5. And I hope some of you fellow commissioners agree with me, this isn't what I, we need. I don't like it. And I better shut up before I say something stupid.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will have to agree with Commissioner Kane. This, these proposals are, in my mind, aggressive and fast. If we put a sales tax initiative on the August ballot, it will, it won't pass. Because on the last community survey, we asked a question about a sales tax for Parks and Rec, and we got an overwhelming no. And so I, I agree that it's something that we can look into. But I think we need to have that education piece for the community, go out and talk to the community about it, get their input, get their thoughts. Because if we just put it on the ballot, it, it's not going to pass. It's we've gone through, we're still going through the effects of a pandemic. There are world dire situations going on right now across the world. A war that was unsanctioned war. We don't know how that's going to turn out. We need to be mindful of that. Now, the, if you, can you go to the mill slide, please? So that 8.5 across all the funds, that is crazy. That, how, what, my question automatically, what gets cut? What services are we going to lose? And I think from our last budget cycle, we, as a commission, we had a strong conversation. Our, the three, I remember two most important things that we have right now on our, on our plate. Reinforcement of our workforce and our maintenance of our infrastructure. Those were the two big things that we were talking about last year. And I figured that would be the two things we would talk about this year as well. Because if we can have all the services initiatives and programs we want, but we need the people to run them and be out in the community and provide those services. We have a lot of staff. We have a lot of turnover, especially in certain departments. We need to stabilize that. We have a lot of infrastructure problem. We're, as our Public Works Director said, we are in a infrastructure crisis. We have a lot of problems we need to fix. We can have all the different buildings. We can have everything we have. But if we don't have roads for the people, no one's going to, no one and no business is going to want to come to Wyandotte County. I don't have a problem with being bold in what we do, but it needs to be strategically bold. And I would, as Commissioner Kane said, the reason last, last budget cycle, I didn't support a one mill to red, mill reduction because it came to us at the very end, literally a week or two before we had to finalize the final vote. That's why I had voted no. I want us to be where we are now, have the conversation of a one mill reduction, and look into the, into a possibility of a sales tax. Not put it on the ballot this year, but look into and have the conversation as a commission and as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis.
Well, I just want to say, Commissioner Davis, District 8. Mayor, this, this is a waste of our time. It, it is a waste of our time. There was opportunity throughout the entire week to communicate with all of us, including Commissioner Townsend, who, who was unable to be here, on what was going to be presented today. And it was very difficult. The plans, the arrangements, the details, we weren't even going to be here. There wasn't even going to be a virtual component, which is pretty unprecedented considering we have been doing remote and then hybrid options. If we are going to work together, we need to come to the table willing to compromise. And Mayor, if you want to be successful, I need you to come to the table willing to compromise, willing to answer your phone, willing to answer emails, and willing to work with us. If not, this will not happen. I will tell you right now, given the lack of information and data, there's, I, I can't even entertain this on the Economic Development and Finance Committee because it is just not where we need to be and we need far more information. Ms. Harrison Lee, you have experience, considerable experience. Can you speak to, in your experience, what has been a proper standard budget process? Can you advise us? Can you advise the mayor on, from your experience, how things have been done?
Cheryl. Cheryl Harrison Lee, Interim County Administrator. Budget processes vary in different communities depending upon the budget platform that you use. And oftentimes, what you will see, there are some jurisdictions that have in their ordinance that they will start with a strategic planning session, which provides some feedback from the commission to the staff, some of the things that would like, they would like to see considered. From that strategic planning session, staff then begins to start to develop a framework for the budget. There'll be public engagement sessions. Depending on the community, you might see various town hall meetings. So it varies a little bit from community to community in terms of how it ultimately ends up. I would say the constant is strategic planning, community engagement, feedback from the commissioners, and then staff development of the budget and budget public hearings.
So it's fair to say, our own interim county administrator, given her experience, given what we all voted for, that expertise, we are currently not following. Mayor, you appointed Ms. Harrison Lee. We approved. That's her experience. We're not following. I yield.
Commissioner Kane.
Could you put the, the 8.5 mill reduction up there again, please? Okay, I've been here, I think this is my 18th budget. We haven't reduced it that much in 18 years. And, and I don't know how we went from last year. Yeah, ever. I, I don't know how we, we went from last year barely making it by, where this year we come in and it's, well, hell, we can do it 8.5, and I ain't even counting the pilot. And, and another comment that was made that, that we're not going to fail the jobs. Public Works is shorthand, right, Mr. Fisher? All these departments are shorthand. Public Work, I mean, Public Safety, you know, we, we need all that. But Public Works, there's, I don't want to put the burden on our employees. And one of the things, and I told it upstairs, that I want to be a better employer to our employees, and we have not done a good job of that at all. The morale is the lowest it's ever been since I've been here. And when I see that 8.5, and we haven't even talked about the pilot, what am we going to tell our employees that we barely give a raise? And those other employees, the, the, the fire dispatch, which is down next to nothing, and say, and, and I want to lower the mill levy, Mayor, but I don't want to strap us for the next commission. You know, this is a big deal. And, 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 and Tom Cooley was here. And Tom Cooley said, do not take points off the board. And by God, the next year, we took them off there and we had to put two more back on. And it, we couldn't even remotely consider this, let alone the pilot. And, and I don't know where all these numbers come from, and I don't know where this vision. But my vision was, we share all our thoughts of what we want. And, and Mayor, this is your thoughts. This is my thoughts. And, and it's kind of like arguing with my wife. I disagree with you 100%. I, I, I can't do this. I ain't kidding either. I, I, I couldn't, I wouldn't tell anybody. I wouldn't vote on their way to hell. And, and, and we, I'm embarrassed to be a commissioner right now.
Commissioner McCarron.
Thank you. You know, one of the things that we have done, Commissioner Markley, myself, the rest of us who were on the commission at the time, reinstituted the community survey. It was clear from the community in the first survey and every survey since then that the most important thing for us to do is to fix the physical infrastructure of this city. Roads, streets, curbs, sidewalks, alleys, fix it. And that doesn't even get into stewards, storm and sanitary. And so we have been meeting as committees, discussing how we can begin to tackle the enormous deferred maintenance debt that we have to dig our way out from under on the maintenance of our physical infrastructure. And Mr. Fisher and his folks from Public Works have told us that we are chronically underfunded, not overfunded, underfunded. And one of his employees told me something yesterday that I just thought was, wow, this was really telling. He mentioned a particular piece of infrastructure that has recently failed and said, that's the canary in the coal mine for everything beginning to fail. And so I, I, I just think that we have again gone to, to strategy before vision. We've gone to strategy before priority. We've gone to strategy before considering the needs of the community. And ultimately, I believe that is a very short sighted approach because we don't take into consideration the very real needs of the people who live in this community. And we need to consider improving quality of life inside the community and inside City Hall. That's ultimately why the 11 of us are here. Thank you.
Commissioner Bynum.
Thank you, Mayor. Melissa Bynum, At-Large District 1. I appreciate the information. It's fascinating to look at. It's interesting and it's valuable to have. It's interesting and it's valuable to have. But if we're going to have a retreat around visioning, I think for a later conversation, I'm really going to need us to have a conversation around this concept of revenue neutral. Because, and I remember bringing this up last year when this topic first surfaced as part of the business of the legislature requiring us to, to do this. And if we choose revenue neutral, this is where I'm going to need deep education. Because if we choose a revenue neutral budget, then I do not understand how on earth we ever build our tax base or speak to these infrastructure needs that Commissioner McCarron brought forward that are daunting is not even close to being the correct word. And, and we've looked at the numbers. Some of us who are chairing these committees have looked at the preliminary scope of what we've been talking about in these subcommittees now for five, six months. And I will say, the other thing that we have said to each other is that it's on us, the elected officials, to bring those enormous needs forward. We cannot make staff bring those needs. We have to do it, and we've said that several times. I do not understand how a revenue neutral budget grows the community in any way. So that would definitely be a conversation I would want to have later. I would, and, and I appreciate all of these comments, but I would like to move into the, into the retreat portion of, of the evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Ramirez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner Bynum. That was something that I had let through, as I was talking, was the subcommittees that we've been on. You know, we, that's the reason why we created them, because we, as a commission, wanted to get down in the weeds and find a way forward. Instead of just every year, staff coming, coming up to us with the CMIP, what strategies, what outcomes can we come up with? And those subcommittees, we have come up with outcomes and strategies from each committee. We have created a document, we will be releasing that once we finalize it. But it, but going to what Commissioner Bynum was saying, some of the numbers, the money that we need to increase, it just won't fit the budget that is, the, the recommendations that are being proposed. I'll just give one number for the one outcome, the primary strategy to increase, to increase pavement, our pavement condition index. For street preservation, from what we currently do is 7.2 million annually, buy an additional 20-plus million annually by 2025. How are we gonna get there if we have an eight and a half mill reduction across all funds? That's just for street, street preservation. That doesn't touch sidewalks, our bridges, our stormwater. Like I said, we can be bold, but we have to be strategically bold about it. Thank you.
Commissioner Stites.
Chuck Stites, District Seven. I'm on the Infrastructure Committee Subcommittee that Commissioner Bynum chairs, and I don't have it in front of me, but one of the things that stuck out in my mind on our last meeting and was the, the, it was amazing to me, the bridge failures that are expected, and I can't remember the numbers, Jeff, if somebody can, wants to chime in and say what the numbers were, but it was 50, 60 million dollars guaranteed every five years? Five to 10 years that we're gonna have to spend, because the bridges are going to fail. They're not getting better, they're getting worse, they're not getting any better at all. And, and you just think about, I was thinking about that. Now, I'm all for reducing our taxes also, don't get me wrong, I mean, but I'm gonna ride that fence. No, but you know, I also don't want to, I don't wanna saddle our, or restrict, I guess, handcuff as where we cannot get critical infrastructure and other things that need to be done in our community. But taxes are, I was on the Edwardsville Commission, City Council for six years, and I remember, I would, I was preaching, reduce the mill levy, and we, we did reduce it, five out of my six years that I was there. And I remember being told, well, the only way you're ever gonna do it is to reduce services. And, and I think that if you, if you, if you think about it in that aspect, which we never did reduce services, but we were able to reduce our city mill levy, which I'm very proud of, and we still got our things done that we needed to get done. If, if, but I don't wanna handcuff us so to the point here that we're not able to take care of the needs. If we don't have roads for people to go to work and drive on, and we don't, we're not taking care of our employees to drive those dump trucks, to drive those police cars, the fire trucks, the dispatchers to get to work, we might as well just hang it up, because it's all gonna go away.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Markley, I'm sorry.
Thanks, we don't have our handy buttons. No handy buttons here. I, I just agree with everything everybody's been saying. I, I don't think that our guiding star should be a revenue neutral rate. That's the state's guiding star, and it was a wrong star for them to settle on because the goal of every county is to not be the same. We, we should be growing. Our entire goal is to grow our tax base, and if we're not gonna take advantage of that, then why bother growing our tax base? Our guiding star should be our community survey and the ones and needs of our community, stabilizing our workforce and stabilizing our infrastructure, and that's the path we should be taking. And I agree with the rest of the comments.
Commissioner Davis.
Couple things, I know, and, and I agree with Commissioner Bynum, so I am gonna hurry up. I, I know that a lot, a lot of our residents have received, just about everybody, right, these, these information, it's not necessarily a bill, right, but we're all getting, right, this mail literally says in red, it's not a bill, right? No, you don't owe $150,000, no, right? But I do think that it is important, and, and we probably should adopt it as a practice, we need to, to educate our residents on our actual share of property taxes. We have other taxing jurisdictions that are also responsible, and they can cut us off, right, they can cut our feet if we say, hey, we're going to lower here, right? But then school districts, or library board, or the community college raise it, right? Then for the person receiving that bill, you still end up paying that amount of money. If we're gonna have a very serious conversation about reducing the mill levy, we need to engage all of the school districts and the community college, and that is the bare minimum that we need to do. In addition, we need to show that dollar graphic every time we have a conversation about the budget and property taxes and say, the unified government, actually, while we collect, what actually goes in our coffers is less than 50%. It's less than 50% that we actually receive. We need to educate our citizens so that they know we are not fully responsible for that property tax bill, and it is incumbent upon us to include those other taxing jurisdictions in that conversation. Thank you.
Commissioner Burrows.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Burrows, At-Large District One. Well, I, I will share with you, the reason why you have a revenue neutral rate is because people, local governments aren't listening to the residents, the property taxes, the most onerous tax that is out there, and that's what the legislature hears and they see, and they're not getting their relief at home, so they're coming to the state. And this is the message that I would send, that we have a way to address all of this, and it's called bold leadership. We all have priorities. I wanna see a mill reduction. I've stated that since I've been here. When I first came aboard, I asked just what you stated, Commissioner Davis, in reference to sending a letter to all the other taxing entities, get them to the table and ask them to stay neutral on raising any rates going forward. And the former administration said no, they had no idea of what it would take to get them to, how, how dare we ask somebody else to run their business, that basically, they just, don't come and tell me how to tax. But I will share this with you, there's ways we can do this. We do have a number of unfulfilled positions within, within our administration all the way down, and I, I do appreciate and respect the fact that we wanna take care of our employers, employees. We wanna be good employers. We just went through wages and increased some wages, and we're looking at increasing the minimum wage for our employees. I think that's the prudent thing to do. It gives us a stronger financial footing in which to make decisions moving forward. As far as infrastructure, I haven't heard one iota yet as to what we're going to get from the federal government in reference to the funds available to address the major infrastructure problems we have here. And we're talking about doing it within the budget process, but we have no idea how much money will come in, and that doesn't allow us to then look at other needs within the community. We haven't even talked about reserves. And so this meeting, Mayor, as I stated, I, I think some of us are a little confused as to why we're here this evening, but I'm gonna continue to advocate for the ratepayers in, in our community. We have to lower the taxes, we have to get them under control. If we don't, it doesn't matter what we do in this community, we're gonna see a mass exodus to our rural communities, and they would love nothing more than to have the population growth leave our community, because then they will have a larger population, and they will be able to address their concerns. But we can afford a mill levy reduction, and I'm gonna do my part and partner with those that believe that being fair to the ratepayers and taxpayers of this community should be first and foremost their priority, and that's, that's where I stand, committee.
Commissioner Stites.
Commissioner Stites, District Seven. So if we could get, and I, I think it'd be a good way to break it down, like what Commissioner Davis was saying, about, you know, the, what percentage goes to each entity? And you know what, we could use it as a dollar bill, just a dollar. Does 33 cents go to this person? Does 1.8 cents go to this one? You know, let's have it. Where do, I don't got it. So you know what, I don't care who they are, I need it.
I, I have.
Yeah. Thank you.
There it is, right there. It's represented as a pie.
I guess that is what makes it a little bit challenging for me to get my mind around it, is because, you know, you know, we, we talk about infrastructure needs at the city level, while, while infrastructure needs at Bonner Springs and at Edwardsville are taken care of with their own city dollars, so it makes it tough. I mean, the, the community college, I mean, 16%, that's a lot of money. And I'm not, well, I, I think that's another conversation for another day, but it, it's hard, it's hard for me to be able to, I am for tax reduction in my, in my district, for sure. And it is, it's a, I'm in a unique position, that's, that's for sure. But I appreciate what the president.
Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Harold Johnson, District Four. The needs are the needs of our community, and what it looks like to me, just as a 30,000-foot level, is that we're trying to rob Peter to pay Paul. You reduce, we're talking about reducing mill levies, but we're talking about potential sales tax increase. It's all to deal with the same, the same problems. We cannot, we have to be very prudent in economies such as, as we are in right now. And while I do know that there is pressure, constant pressure from our constituency, and, and constant misinformation in terms of whether or not we are the highest paying, tax-paying district or, or community in the state of Kansas, it's not true. And we have information that has proven that. What has already been said, and I'm gonna jump on board, because I, I think I said it first, is that we have to have a comprehensive strategic conversation of all the taxing entities. This goes back to six years ago. And so we've been talking about it, but we have never, ever one time, there's been some nuance, some, some suggestion that we have tried to do it in the past and it has failed. We need to try again to have a comprehensive conversation with all of our, because we're all servicing the same people. And so, again, to, to suggest a revenue neutral rate, I didn't like it before, I still don't like it. I think we need to be very strategic and very prudent, and, and, and then at the same time, making sure that we, by all means possible, educate our constituency constantly to, to let them know that we, what we're doing here only represents 46% of one, 47% of one mill, and that's not going to make that big of a difference in the pocketbooks of our, of our constituents. Now, an eight mill, maybe, but the kind of damage I think that that would do to us, I'm not willing to jump off that bridge at this particular time. So thank you, I yield the floor.
Commissioner Bynum.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I don't know how much more slides we have. I was gonna ask, if we're getting ready to move into the next part, could we have 10 minutes? That was the request I was gonna make. I need a, I need a cookie break.
Yes, we will. Commissioner Ramirez.
And this is my last thing, and it'll be a request, and I'm sure the, from what I've heard, the full board will more than likely agree with my request. My request to you, Mr. Mayor, and to Ms. Harrison Lee, and to what Commissioner Burrows is saying, please create a letter, send it to all taxing jurisdictions, and invite them to the table. That is the request I ask. It'll show, it'll be good to know who will show at the table and who won't. I just want, as our previous administration didn't do that, wouldn't do it, so thank you. I ask that that request be fulfilled.
Commissioner Burrows.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrows, At-Large District Two. I just want to state this to my colleagues, that the Senate yesterday passed the 65 and older property tax freeze in the Senate, and I would anticipate it being part of the tax plan to come before the House next week. And just want to bring that to your attention as we start to work through the budget. Just, just a little bit of good news for those seniors in our community that have cried out for tax relief. It could have an impact on our budget, and we need to know how much that impact is, but that doesn't mean we do a shift.
Commissioner McCarron.
Thank you. I guess in the old days, they called it alchemy, right, turning lead into gold. And that is our eternal challenge here, is to turn lead into gold. How to simultaneously increase services and decrease fees? And that is an impossibility. And so it is our job, and I think I've heard it clearly from everybody who's here tonight, it's our job to find out how we titrate that, how we manage to meet in the middle between lowering the fees while at the same time providing more varied and greater levels of service. And that's what I thought we were going to come here tonight for, was the opportunity to set our vision, which would then drive those titration discussions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. In the interest of, I'll, I'll give my statement. A lot that you all put forward, that's the purpose of this strategy. It's designed to have these robust conversations, these debates that are far too frequently over the years I've never seen happen before. The public needs to know where we stand on the issues, they need to know where you stand as individual representatives throughout your districts, they need to know that we're having the hard conversations about the future of Wyandotte County. So this is intentional, when you talk about a budget strategy, which is gonna lead into the facilitator. Different doesn't mean deficient when you have these types of conversations. It's just different.
It's just different, but it's the right way forward. Commissioner Davis, uh, I'm not wasting my time doing the work of the people. And you being here is not a waste of time and you need to recognize that. When we have these hard conversations, there is no waste of time when you're talking about people's lives and the livelihood of Wyandotte County, the direction that people have told me when I campaigned that they wanted this county to go. I will not, I went, and I'm, say that with all, I'm here because I've sat in people's living room and watched them cry. I've watched people that are on fixed income say that they cannot take it. I've watched the young lady working two and three jobs, just trying to make ends meet. I've watched people lose their houses and cry. I've watched people say that the tax burden here is far too heavy. I've watched developers walk away and say they will not do business here because of taxes, burdensome fees and our BPU. You cannot continue to do the same things and expect a different result. I've heard a lot of conversations here today. I'm really passionate about this. I'm mayor today because I stood behind a commitment I made to this community that I'm going to fight for what this community voted me in office for. And that is to give them the relief that they deserve. We are 1.7 billion dollars in debt and we keep borrowing. Ms. Foundation, if you would, could you give just a reader's digest of what revenue neutral is? Please.
Well, whatever property tax we're currently collecting this year would be the same amount we collect next year.
So basically our budget stays the same. Am I correct? Am I correct?
Well, the property tax is only 30, 30% of the city general fund and about 50% of the county general fund. So there are other revenue sources which may grow, so.
In, in general, what I'm saying is a revenue neutral does not take us below where we're at this year as far as our funding, right?
Um, it, yeah, the other revenues would grow. So there is a little bit more money you generate from the other revenue sources.
So, so when you talk about, I, I guess the thought is, is that we're giving money back and we're dropping our budget down to levels below where we're at the previous year, and that's just not the case. This recommendation, Commissioner Kane, is just that. It's a recommendation, a proposal from this mayor to start this discussion that hopefully that you all could at least put the people of this community first for a change. And I don't mean that to disrespect anybody. But I can tell you, I've heard it again, and I've heard it again, and I'm not going to back away from it. I'm going to fight for this community. And I mean that. And people are telling me that their taxes are too high. The BPU fees are too high, that our burdensome fees are too high. I've had numerous discussions about how to get to where we're at with a professional administrator that said, and a CFO that said, this can be done responsibly, not irresponsibly, not that's going to hurt this community or set us back, but responsibly to keep us at the levels where we were today, or at today. And so I say that with confidence that I believe in our CFO, in our staff, in our administrator, and what this proposal and recommendation, because that's all it is, to start a conversation that they brought forward. I'm never going, as long as I'm mayor, going to stop fighting for this community and what I ran on and what people told me they wanted, and that is relief. They got their tax bills. You haven't been watching the feedback from this community about being disappointed and afraid of what could come from these mill levy increases? I ask you to please look, listen to the people of this community. I've talked to developers that want to do business here, but then they come back to our taxes, our fees, amongst another, a lot of other things. It was asked that we need to bring the other taxing entities together. I've already made contacts and I've got meetings set up to do just that. Because it does no good if we lower our mill levy and we are not in agreement with our other tax entities and they see it as opportunity not to do the same, are to raise their mill levies. So yes, we have to be in agreement in what's best for Wyandotte County. We are one unified county. Commissioner Stites represents Edwardsville and Bonner Springs. I've talked to those people in those communities, the Wyandotte County side. I can tell you everywhere I campaigned, it doesn't matter, all four corners of Wyandotte County, everyone I've talked to, from every persuasion, their number one complaint was taxes, BPU and burdensome fees. And that's just a start. This isn't a waste of my time. I'm going to go out into this community and continue to see what's important to our residents and to bring that back to you, and that's what I'm doing. And that's what this proposal represents. But I need to stop here. This isn't the only proposal. We are just at the beginning of our budgetary conversation. We haven't even got to the end yet. What I've tasked our CFO and our administrator also do was to work with you, just like you want, to see what's important to you. What do you want the budget to look like? It's not my budget. Ultimately, you have to decide. And hopefully we can get to a point to where you all can find some common ground to agree on while also putting the community first and making sure whatever you do is community-driven. So I've tasked them with coming back with a total of three to four additional proposals that reflects the will of this commission. So we have done this in a thoughtful way. We have came up with a recommendation that yes, I support, that I would want you to consider, a proposal from your mayor that is doable, it's actionable, it's responsible, and it doesn't set this community back. I'm aware that infrastructure is of great concern and great need. That's why I had a conversation with our Lieutenant Governor and he assures me that he would let me know as soon as those infrastructure funds come down so we can start prioritizing our infrastructure needs and then having a real conversation about how we shore that up if we come up short. I'm not overlooking those types of issues. The absence sales tax proposal is just that. It's a proposal for you to consider. Because if we are going to lower the mill levy, I believe that we should involve our community in making some of the decisions that can be impactful to them, which is how do we spread the tax base, especially to those sunsetters and those people that don't live here, to help bring about the police stations and the fire stations and the equipment that our public safety folks need, that they told me they need, critical needs. Park, rec centers that are falling apart and disrepair. Spray parks, road projects. All these things are of great importance to us. So as this mayor, it would be irresponsible of me not to bring you responsible, actionable and doable proposals as part of a proposal package that staff and our minister bring to you to consider as we move into the budget conversation. You can reject what I put out, that's fine, but I wanted to give you something to work with and a starting point and something to consider, something that you can talk amongst yourselves. Eight percent, it's bold. But it doesn't hurt from where we're at today. What it does is bring the relief that our citizens have been demanding that they want. Because most people that I've talked to, the phone calls I've got, the emails I've got, they tell me that, uh, their valuations went up and they're concerned because their taxes are going to go up. I know we all love people. We all care about this community. We may, um, diverge from our opinions on how best to get to where we need to be. But what I tell you is these conversations need to be had. I just ask that you please listen to the people that are in this community and all four corners and realize that we just cannot keep doing business as usual. How do we grow our tax base is we got to get rooftops. Rooptops aren't going to come. Businesses aren't going to come if it doesn't fit into their business model. You know how we've been getting businesses? By giving away the farm with huge incentives that bring little to no value to Wyandotte County. What it does bring is if I have a house and my valuation goes up and I look at this huge multimillion complex, take your pick. And I pay more than them, how is that right? To ask any of our taxpayers to feel good about their evaluations going up, paying more taxes when we've given away huge tax incentives? My opinion, it's wrong. Wyandotte County deserves better. Our citizens deserve better. I'm not going to stop fighting. That's why I'm here. We can disagree without being disagreeable. But I just urge you all to please join me in listening to our constituents as we move through this budget cycle because their voice matters to me. And when I ran on being community-driven, that's what community-driven means. So we'll adjourn for until about recess, till 6:45 and we'll come back. Thank you. Thank you.
If we could start gathering around, we can get started. Oh, you're fine. We got to wait on Commissioner. Oh, there's Commissioner Davis. All right. And Milky Ways. All right. All right, we're going to start in T minus 10 seconds. Commissioner Davis, please, sir, if you would. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to reconvene this meeting and I'm going to turn it over to our county administrator, Ms. Sherri Harrison Lee.
Sherri Harrison Lee, thank you, Mayor, Mayor and Commissioners. Effective collaborative budget development is much like a three-legged stool with the three legs being staff, the commission, and the community. So all parts are equally important to be able to get to an effective budget. So to that end, tonight, we are inviting your insight. We're going to have that facilitated by Mr. Ed O'Malley from the Kansas Leadership Center. Mr. Ed O'Malley is the founding president and CEO of the Kansas Leadership Center. He is an accomplished and seasoned professional as well as a former elected official. He's a speaker, consultant, and an author, and is here tonight to help facilitate the strategic visiting session for the budget development that staff will use to be able to develop the budget and bring back to you. Mr. O'Malley.
Thank you, Madam Manager, and please don't hold that former elected official thing against me. I served in the Kansas House with Commissioner Burrows a long time ago, and I promise I always voted exactly the way local governments would want me to. I promise. I'm not sure, actually, Tom. We'd have to look. No, don't look it up. I don't know. Thank you for the opportunity to be here, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to be with you tonight. I am from the Kansas Leadership Center. We're based in Wichita, Kansas. We do work around the state. Some of you have participated in some of our programs. Our main work. Our, are good now? Wonderful. Our, our main work over the last 15 years has been leadership development. People like yourselves, others heavily engaged in civic life, come to programs and experiences of the center, kind of like spring training for Major League Baseball players. Even the best of the best go back to training to get better on their skills of public engagement and public, public leadership. In recent years, more and more often, we have local governments, community groups, community coalitions engaging with us to help them flesh out what, what is the vision? What is the, what, what is the hope? What are the aspirations they have for their community, for their public initiative, whatever it might be? And that's, of course, the context I'm in today with you. Our job, and I have a colleague with me, Tina Khan, from the Kansas Leadership Center, one of our facilitators and teachers who's with me as well, who will be taking lots of notes from our conversations. Our job is really twofold tonight. Number one, we want to explore with you, help you explore, really. And by the way, I just have questions. So I don't have a presentation. I don't have any slides. All I have are some open-ended questions that I'm going to need you to answer. But we have questions that will help you explore and us explore together. What are the biggest aspirations you have for the UG? What are the biggest concerns you have? What makes progress hard on those things? So we're going to explore this. We're not going to walk out of here tonight with a vision. I think you'll walk out of here tonight with having made some progress with clarity around what are the aspirations and the concerns, or maybe at least clarity around who feels what. The, the point is not to walk out of here with agreement. The point is to hear, you know, from you and hear what's on your mind. After tonight, I think you all know this, if you don't, I hope you'll play along, after tonight, Tina and I will be in touch to have a conversation with each of you to ask some follow-up questions. So we're starting the conversation, but then we want to have just a one-on-one conversation with you to keep hearing your thoughts. Eventually, you know, within a few weeks, we'll engage back with the manager and share the themes that were lifted up that we saw lifted up tonight and the themes that we're going to lift up from those one-on-one conversations, which, as you might imagine, in those one-on-one conversations, they're, they're not going to be recorded conversations. They're going to be a chance just for you to share what's on your mind around the questions we talked about tonight and any additional reflections you've had between now and that phone call. And then we'll, then we'll put some thoughts back to you. Here's what we heard. Here are the themes that we lifted up. I talked to the manager and she agreed that we could go tonight until 1:00 AM, so we'll...
There might not be a message.
No, no, no. We, we, we will not go till 1:00 AM.
You're going to be one short.
What we'll do is we'll go no later, I, I think, Madam Manager, till 8:00 PM. I think in a good hour and four minutes of this conversation, we'll get it started.
We'll ration the cookies.
Ration the cookies till 8 o'clock. Okay. So I, I, a couple, a couple other just thoughts about ground rules. What's useful right now is for you to share what you're thinking, to be curious about what other people are thinking. It's really not a time at this juncture to debate, okay? Like the questions I'm going to ask you, the first one is going to be, by the way, when you think about the future of the UG, what's your greatest aspiration? Brian and Melissa, you don't need to agree, but I'd love to hear what your answers are. All right, hold on, hold on. And I shouldn't use your first name, but I should call you Commissioner Kane and Commissioner... So, so, so hearing your thoughts and knowing that the point is to surface these things and then what Tina and I are going to be doing as we review the notes and listen as we talk with you on the phone, what are the themes that are emerging? My guess is you have some things on here that you disagree, that you disagree on. I, I'm just guessing that there are some disagreements in this room.
Were you here an hour?
That's okay. In my experience with public bodies is disagreements are okay. I'm also assuming that there might be more in this room that you agree on. That's just my assumption, based on working with a lot of public bodies. So our job is to help you make sense of all that in a way that helps you engage in the work that you've been asked to do. So without any more opening remarks, let me ask you the first question. And I mean, also, I should say, we're going to work in a few different ways over the next hour and three minutes. We're going to spend some time in the large group conversation. But this is, you need to have more of a retreat like mine on for the next hour, okay? So we're, we're going to do a few things different, too. So there are going to be some times where I'm going to ask you, the, the, the three of you, and Madam Manager, I think you should be in the conversations, the three of you to huddle up and have a quick conversation, and, and you all to huddle up, have a quick conversation. We, we won't do that for 30 minutes. We might do it for four, okay? What I found is giving you a chance to hear one another, but also giving you a chance to get your head warmed up before you share publicly is, can be quite useful. So we're going to spend a little bit of time in small groups. We're going to spend time in the large group. I, I may or may not, at one point or another, ask you to, you know, take a minute and just think for a minute and jot some thoughts down individually. I might, I might pull that facilitation trick out if it's needed. Any questions about purpose? Any questions about how we're going to work together for the next hour? All right. So the first question, and Tina, Nora, I have any opinions on the answer, on what the answers to these questions should be. The first question is, when you think about the future of the unified government, what is your greatest aspiration? And I, I want to call your attention to the word greatest. We're all politicians. I'm a former, but you know, you can take, you, you can take the boy out of politics, but you can't take the politics out of the boy, right? So we're all able to speak about lots of, lots of aspirations. And I, I know you can do that. What would be very helpful is to hear your greatest aspiration. This is one where we are going to start just for, you know, rapid fire, three minutes in small groups. So, you know, huddle up, huddle up, huddle up, huddle up, just for three minutes and share your thoughts on this question. As you come back, I'd love to hear your answers. So take three minutes. I'll call you back here in just a moment.
Can I, can I clarify?
Sure. Yes, sir. What you mean by unified government? Hmm. What, what would be the best context?
Well, are we talking about the government, the organ? Yeah, we know.
What, what context you think would be most beneficial? So I would encourage you to go with community and we're super flexible here. If you have thoughts about an aspiration for the government, speak that up, too. We can, we can take both sets of notes if we need to. Not a problem. Three minutes. Thank you for that, Pastor. I take about one more minute. And if you've run out of things to talk about, you can talk about your second aspiration. All right, come on back. Okay, come on back. So, so let, let, let's hear some of these and, you know, we're, we're a small, we're a small enough group that it would be great to hear everybody. And I know politicians can talk for a long time. It's, it's true. And I, so rapid fire headline-like, you know, the, the, the good news is I am, I'm, I'm no longer a politician, so if I have to cut off the mic or make you unhappy, I might be able to get away with it, right? I can, I, I, so, but we want to hear from everybody and we've got other questions, too. And I also want to just make sure we have time for people to build off one another. That feels really... That feels really effective right now and useful. There are, there, there, so, so let, 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 let's, you know, speak, speak efficiently and don't be offended if I ask you to sum it up so we can move it along. So who wants to go first? And by the way, if you, if you feel uncomfortable sharing what you shared in your small group, just share whatever your partner said. They won't care. It'll be fine. I'm joking about that. Yes, sir. Commissioner Burrows. Okay. Talk. And, and what does that mean to you?
It means that the problems that we have discussed now, that they've been addressed.
Yeah.
Our neighborhoods are whole, families are happy, rec centers, community is collectively doing well.
Yeah.
City is a first-class city, not a city of the first class.
Yeah.
First class.
Love, love that word order. Thank you, Commissioner Burrows. Commissioner Sikes.
Commissioner Sikes, District Seven. I think what I, the way, you know, when we started out in our group by saying live, work, and play. And I think that.
Turn on my mic now. Again, Commissioner Sikes, District Seven. Live, work, and play. And you know, you guys have all seen, probably seen bumper stickers and shirts and things that go around our community that say proud to be from the dot. You know what? I am born and raised, been here my whole life. You know, when we talk about first-class city, I think this, this goat follows right under what Commissioner Burrows was saying. First class in the way that we live, the way that we work, how we take care of our employees and how we play and that we have a place to play. And proud to be, call Wyandotte County our home.
Thank you. Who's next? Yes, sir.
Commissioner Ramirez, District Three. My was, goes both ways for community and for us, UG as an organization, being receptive and open with each other. There, it just seems that within our community, as I've talked to my constituents, there's this other, that we're the, the other person is the other, that they're the bad guy or that there's a bad, we just don't talk very well with each other. Communication, being open, receptive to each other's thoughts, comments. I think that's my greatest aspiration because if we can be able to sit down and have an open conversation and be direct and know what the other person wants, we can get work done.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, Commissioner.
Yeah, mine would be changing the internal and external perception of our community. I, I'm not from Wyandotte County originally, and so I have a fairly unique and still recently, right, Wyandotte County. And so I have a fairly unique perspective in that, quite frankly, I'm tired of people speaking bad on our city, promoting negative perceptions that are not true. But that's from the outside. From the inside, and that's what's even harder to stomach, are our own residents talking bad about our community, our own people talking bad about our community. I want us to change that. How do we change how? I want to, my highest aspiration is Wyandotte County's perception is positive, we're innovative, we're forward-thinking. People want to be here. They want to move here. They want to live, work, and play. And that's not just the tactical part, but it's also the perception part. And I really want us to change and focus on that perception.
Great, great. So we'll just keep going this way. Pastor, you like to go first?
I was described, so I will tell everybody around, so from Commissioner Johnson to piggyback on Commissioner Davis, that the members of our community are proud of themselves and proud of our community, and they choose to live here with pride. And from Commissioner Bynum, that our built infrastructure is of sufficient condition to support a very high quality of life and work. And then from myself, that our median household income is higher than any other city or county in the metro area.
Thank you. Mine is simple. I just want to improve people's lives and make Wyandotte County, or at least help make Wyandotte County, a community that's absolutely second to, to no one.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner.
I think what would demonstrate sort of the culmination of many of our goals is if when you were driving down every street in our county, you had that feeling you have in some of our neighborhoods already where you go, gosh, this is a great little neighborhood. This is a sweet little neighborhood. And so I think that's the vision that every neighborhood has had the attention that it needs so that when you drive down that street, you go, gosh, that's a great little neighborhood. So that deals with our codes and our infrastructure, all those bite issues that we've been obsessed with over all these years. That's the vision.
Well, thank you. I love that descriptor too. Like one of the things that we talked about with the manager was the question, how would you know if you were making progress? And that's a great example. So we might come back to that one. I think everybody had a chance to go. Yep, yep. You, okay. Okay, all right, all right, fair enough. So, so here's the next question then. And by the way, you, you all are politicians, so you know the rule. I'm going to ask a question that you can do, politicians do, you can answer whatever question you want to, right? And so I guess what I'm saying is, I mean this affectionately. If I'm not asking you a question that's helping you share what you think would be useful for you to share, share what you think would be useful to share. Right? That's okay. Don't be too loyal to my questions. Be loyal to your community, be loyal to what's in your heart and in your head about this community. My, my, my next question for you is the flip side of that first one. And we're kind of just getting warmed up here in our first 10 minutes or so. So it's the flip side of that, that, that first question. This one is, when you think about the future of the unified government, thinking about the community, the community of the UG, what concerns you the most? I want to apologize for this question being a little negative, but hey, we got to be real. And if you ask me questions about my organization, I, I'm going to have things that I most aspire to, and I'm going to have things that concern me the most. When I was serving in elected office, I had things I aspired to from my district, and I had things that concerned me the most. So we're, we're going to, we're going to focus on the negative maybe just for a minute, but we're doing it for a purpose of trying to illuminate what are the types of things that need your leadership? So when you think about the future of your community, what concerns you the most? I would call your attention to those last two words, the most. Not a laundry list, the most. And, and again, we're going to just for a couple of minutes in small groups, but I would ask you this time, a different small group. So you're going to have to like get up and walk a little bit. Okay, there you go. Manager, thank you for demonstrating that. Three or four minutes.
What that does, what goes also leads to silo thinking.
Take about one more minute. All right, come on back, come on back. All right, come on back. All right, let, let's hear some of these answers. And by the way, I don't know if any of you are K-State fans. I need to tell you. Oh, oh, boy. Oh, oh, yikes, x. Okay, maybe I'll just, maybe I'll do it differently. I've got, I've got purp. Gosh, I, I've got purple shoelaces on, everybody. I mean, okay, let me, let me ask it differently. I hope this might work differently. Any Bill Snyder fans? I mean, you're okay with Bill Snyder, right? I'm getting nothing from our friends here. Okay. Let me, the reason I bring this up is Coach Bill Snyder was one of our original board members at the Kansas Leadership Center. And if you know anything about Coach, you, you know that, you know, we could be beating Oklahoma 52 to seven. We could have beat Oklahoma 52 to seven. See, I'm, I'm, I'm not a, okay, but you, we could, we could beat Oklahoma 52 to seven and Coach Snyder afterwards would be talking about what we could have done better. Okay, so he was one of our founding board members. By the way, he, he agreed to be on the board because, and Tom, you might remember this, we wrote a bill and crafted and passed it to name the highway after Coach that rolls into town. I, I sponsored that bill and I learned if you name a highway after somebody and then you ask them to serve on your nonprofit's board, they have to say yes. So they, they, this question really comes from Coach, right? It's, it's, it's a question of like, what needs attention? What's our, what's our biggest concern? What's our biggest concern? So let's hear some of these answers. Again, we're not debating. It's okay to have different answers, but we want to hear the different answers. And we're still just getting warmed up. So the next question, we're going to go to kind of a different level, but we got to hear these things first. So yes, Commissioner.
I guess I'll go first. I was, I had Ms. Harrison Lee and Commissioner Kane. We all agreed that it's changing our culture of we always done, we always keep the thing, the status quo. That's the culture through within our community and within our organization. That's the greatest concern that we need, we need to change. And I'm sure each of us commissioners have the same view or some level of that view. So that's, we all agreed on that.
Yeah. But just, so I'm not going to let you off the hook yet. Because it's this great, it's such a great thing for us to explore for just a minute. I, I can, I can imagine what you're going to say. And, and, and remember where this is eventually going is, so how do we, what does it look like to exercise leadership, which is your role's job? By the way, not just your job, other people in the communities, leadership is needed as well. It, what does it look like to exercise leadership to make more progress on our, towards our greatest aspirations and to mitigate these most significant concerns? So just to dig a little deeper, that's the thing that concerns you the most. So just describe why that concerns you the most. Like, what, talk about why that's what came to the top for the three of you.
It. Commissioner Kane?
If we don't change people's minds, then we're never going to move on. We're always going to be right here and we'll be happy and we're not happy. We'll be miserable because we didn't do anything but just sit there. And if we don't put our best foot forward to move the community forward, you know, we're in trouble. And, and, and we have to be community-minded to move everyone forward, all four corners of Wyandotte County, just not my district or Commissioner McCarron's district or any of these. All of us have to move forward to make this a better place. And, and when people sit still, they get old, they grow fat, and they die. And I'm old, but we have to push the community to go in the right direction. It's because it's just like the homeless situation we got. We have to improve it. It, it's not an option. You know, and, and it's not just, it's in all our districts.
No.
So we got to move as many people as forward and those that don't want to move forward, maybe we need to pull them forward a little bit.
Commissioner Kane, thanks for, for chiming in. And the next question, we're going to get even deeper into some of this, but I just, I, I gotta just make one quick comment because has the term cave people what made its way to Wyandotte County in Kansas City, Kansas yet? By the way, have you heard that term cave people? Okay, it's, I, I hear in other local governments, other places, it stands for citizens against virtually everything. Okay. No, 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 no. Here, here's, I know we laugh, we laugh, we laugh, but I actually think my experience is, I think what you two are sharing is really, really interesting. I hear you saying that the status quo is not, you know, need to change. And my experience working in community life, working across the state and well beyond is that I don't know many people who think of themselves as a citizen against virtually everything. So what, when I've heard that term, I usually hear it about other people. Nobody ever claims to be it, right? And so what, what I'm playing with is I, and I think where your role's comments are making my mind go is, how do you mobilize the people who you need to mobilize? How do you mobilize change? When there are lots of reasons to keep the status quo, which we can explore here in a minute. Let, let's hear some more of these concerns, other things that concern you the most. Yes, Pastor.
The negative opinions about our community that are based on misinformation. And that, that's where I kind of started, but to even go a step further, the things that makes us, what, what I would consider our greatest asset, which is the diversity of our people, is also our greatest detriment. Because in many regards, we live in such a siloed community. Most of persons around this table I would not have met before I became a commissioner. And I am finding out about so many more people, whether that be from Bonner, Edwardsville, Piper, wherever the case may be, since I've been a part of this commission, which is a great opportunity. But the average person that lives in our community may not live amongst other people in our community. And I think that can be an impediment.
And maybe just, just take that a little bit deeper. What, what's the consequence of that, those silos of diversity? What, what's the consequence when it comes to planning, visioning, guiding the overall community?
Being vulnerable. You know, giving up some control maybe. You know, the things that keep us separated that have been going on for decades. We're not dealing with something that is new. This has been in around Wyandotte County probably as long as I've been alive. And I, I maybe I'll go back to the early seventies, late sixties and somebody might correct me. There's only a few of you that could correct me. I just want to make sure that we're all, it's, it's inclusive language, you know, so.
It's great. Thank you for that. Other, other things that concern you the most? Yes, Commissioner.
I, I was in the same group with Commissioner Johnson and, and just to add on to that, often the narrative, which is true, right? Wyandotte County is one of the most diverse counties per capita in the country, right? That is beautiful. That is an asset, but it can, it also presents a challenge. And it's one of the things that scares me because when we look at disparities, not just on race, but if you look at disparities on gender, by education, by job profession, by the geography of where you live in the city, right, agriculture, right? More suburban or city, wherever, right? Those disparities are present. And so with us not having a homogeneous city, my fear is that one of our greatest assets, diversity, becomes our greatest challenges and it leads to widespread disparities that we are unable to fix.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, thank you for that. Let's get, let's get some other concerns in here. Yes, Commissioner.
Speaking only for myself this time. So when I think about the future of the UG, the thing that concerns me the most is that our staff will not have the resources and/or support to do their jobs and to provide the excellent service that they. the excellent surface that they are capable of providing for the benefit of our citizens.
Thank you. A few, a few, anything that folks wanna get on the table they haven't heard yet?
Sorry, Melissa Bynum, um, mine was the, the desire to provide tax relief while also addressing the daunting infrastructure needs of the community. So I, I'm, I'm gonna try to stop focusing on that, but it's really, uh, huge concern for me.
Two big concerns, and then the third one of balancing those two. Yeah, that's right. You, you found a sneaky way to say three concerns, by the way. I, I'm impressed with that. It's help, it's, it's a bit super helpful. Yeah, Commissioner.
We're in that place calm, um, because we're not gonna, we're not gonna get where we wanna go, sort of scrabbling over the rocks where we're, you know, we haven't found that place. Hey, where do we go next? We're just like, uh, just scrabbling along the side still. Um, and we've just faced a lot, and it looks like Well, people are gonna figure out how to live in this world. They're just gonna figure it out on their own.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any others? Okay. My, my next question for you, and I know we could talk about concern, Mr. Mr. Merritt, you have, I'm sorry. I'm sorry if I missed you trying to, yeah, yeah, thank you for that. Say, say, say a little more. What does that, what does that mean?
Well, uh, a lot of things that I talked about. Uh, businesses not wanna locate here, uh, people not being able to afford to live here, uh, burdens on our, our seniors, not having programs for our kids, uh, infrastructure that's crumbling, taxes that are high. Um, I can go on down the list. Uh, maybe not being as responsible or responsive to our citizens that is, as we can. It, it's just a litany of things that we look at. Uh, maybe not providing the types of, uh, support that our public safety officials need, uh, our police and our fire to keep this community safe. Um, and if they don't keep this community safe, it's more people that are gonna leave this community. Uh, but, um, just when you talk about, uh, our fees, uh, with BPU, and how people that are poor have their utilities cut off, not just because they couldn't, uh, pay their utilities, but also because they couldn't pay a burdensome, uh, pilot fee as well. So there's just a lot of things that that can really tie into this becoming a failed community i- if, uh, if we just don't get a handle.
Yeah, the, 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 you know, the term failed community is what, what struck me by that. And that's, I think, not fun to think about, but maybe a useful term or, or mindset to have, uh, that we wanna make sure we, we don't have come reality. He- here's my next question. And before I ask the question, just a quick reflection. Um, I've been involved in, you know, community groups and civic groups for a long, long time. Um, I think Commissioner Burrows and I were in our teenage years when we were in the legislature together, right? And, and these, so what I've noticed is in these types of conversations throughout the state, and we have the privilege of doing work throughout the country and around the world now, what I notice often is most of the things listed when people answer these questions, uh, didn't pop up yesterday. Like, I, I'm ge- I'm guessing, and I could be wrong. I follow things up. I live in Wichita now. I'm from, uh, this metro area. Uh, the district that I represented was just across the county line, Roland Park. But I follow things close enough that I think this is an informed guess, that if I would have been here five years ago and asked these same two questions, I might have gotten some of the same answers. Is my assumption. My, my, my guess is we didn't all of a sudden have an aspiration to take really good care of our employees. My, my guess is the concern related to how the community engages across difference didn't just emerge last week. And, and so, so what I'm getting at is, and that, this isn't to say that there aren't, haven't been good people, including many of you, who have been working on these things. I'm not trying to say there's been no progress. I'm certainly not saying that. But I am saying that if these are the things that concern us the most, and the things we most aspire to, not trying to blame anybody, I'm not, but I'm just clearly, if these are the things that concern us the most, and that we most aspire to, we haven't made enough progress on them, right? I mean, that's, that's kind of just obvious, okay? So if I'm back in five years, you know, ideally, there are different answers. And that would be a signal that something fundamentally has changed. Right? That you would have made enough progress on some of these things, that these wouldn't be your top spot. These wouldn't be your top answer, right? So here's my question, sorry for the long lead in, the question, and this might be the last time you go to small groups. So if you're one of these people that hates going to small groups, just so you know, I think this is the last time. The question is, what makes progress so hard? Yeah, there's, I mean, the way to think about it is there's a gap. The things that concern us the most describe our current reality, okay? Our greatest aspirations is the future we want. There's a gap between our current reality and the future we want for our community. What makes closing that gap so hard? I know there's a time and there's a place to debate policy. He's already, he's already picking his group. That's okay. I'm, I'm about, I'm about to turn you loose. You're good, you're good. I, I know there's a time and a place to get specific into policy. And my experience is there's also a time and a place for a, a governing body to get clear about what, what are the characteristics that make it hard to make progress on these things? Cause there must be real things in the way. I mean, there must be. Good people have been working on these things. And by the way, if your first instinct about what makes progress hard is in the room, if, if she or he is in the room, um, talk about the second thing that makes progress hard. No, I'm just kidding. I'm kidding. What, what I'm serious about though, what I'm serious about though is if your first instinct is to think what makes progress hard is, you know, is so-and-so, is Tina, I would encourage you to think a little deeper. Because over the last, I think these concerns could, could go back five, ten, fifty. So let's, let's not fall into the easy trap of it's, it's so-and-so. Because it's not. Okay? So what makes progress so hard? We're gonna get to what does this all mean for you and your leadership? What makes progress so hard? Go for it. Find, find another group somehow. Uh, I'm gonna give you a few more minutes on this one. It's gonna be six or seven or eight minutes. Come on back. All right. So come on back. So to, to me, this question, um, this is the key question. Yeah, in my opinion, it's the, what makes it hard in your all's work as people exercising leadership in this community is to try to figure out how to overcome the answers you're about to provide. Okay? And you see how that's, that's different than coming up with the, in the perfect idea, which you, you're gonna also have to do some of that maybe, you know, but, but if you don't figure out how to mitigate the answers you're about to give, I'm gonna come back here in five years, or somebody else is gonna be here in five years, they're gonna ask some similar questions, and you're gonna get similar answers. Okay? So this question, your answers, which we could talk about this question for hours, we're not going to. But we're gonna just begin to surface some of the things that make progress hard. Uh, because if, as you craft a vision, which gets translated into budget priorities in a way of funding the government of this community, which is just a piece of, the government has a piece of progress on these, but isn't the whole piece, right? But as you do that, we've gotta make sure we're grounding it in how do we overcome the things we're about to talk about. So let, let's start to hear some of these. Yeah, this Commissioner. I, I told, I told you we were just warming up earlier. Yeah, Mike?
They're communal solutions, right? Like, the, the idea of our reputation or our neighborhoods. We ten commissioners cannot solve the problem of our reputation, or the problem of our siloed diverse communities, or the problem even of our neighborhoods. It has to be a communal solution. And I think the struggle is the community has to buy in to the fact that that's a priority problem, a problem and the priority problem. Cheryl was saying they have to, it also has to be a shared priority. They have to buy in to the fact that it's the problem, that it's the priority problem, and that they have to be part of solving it. And a lot of times they look back at us and say, well, I don't have to solve it. I elected you, and you're supposed to handle that. But the problems, almost every problem, I think every problem we came up with, is a problem that we can't solve without it being a communal solution.
Yeah, and, and this, this mic, it's a powerful mic sometimes. Yeah, it's okay. I can handle. I think I just need to step back a little bit. You all tell me if you can't hear me. So, so thanks for getting us started. And the, these are really critical characteristics. So I, I heard lots of things in there. You're gonna see, I mean, we're, we're gonna get all these themes back to everybody, but some of the things that just that I'm hearing in that, it shines a light on all this stuff. Commissioners can't do it all that people expect you to. Okay? So what, in essence, these challenges you've lifted up so far can't be solved by authority alone, is the way I would say that. Okay? Uh, even though everybody is gonna want to tell you that you should solve it.
It can't be solved by budget alone either. No amount of budget money is gonna make the guy not throw his trash in the driveway. And we all know that. Like, we, we could have a million codes officials, but they still have to give him fourteen days notice. And then if he doesn't obey it, we have to send out an abatement team. That guy is still a jerk. And then no amount of budget money
Yeah.
solves that problem. So no amount of authority and no amount of budget money is gonna solve the problems that we were saying were our primary problems.
I, I also heard in what you said, um, you talked about communal problems, they're communal decisions. And I, I just wanna say this, I think you all know this, but uh, leadership is harder in public life than it is in private life. And the reason why is because in public life, nobody has enough authority to do much of anything. Okay? In private life, a CEO has a lot of authority. And, and authority can be useful. It, it, not everything, but in public life, systems are designed, your system of government is designed, right, to have very diffuse authority. The mayor's authority is only so much. The manager's authority is only so much. And by the way, in cities or, or, or communities that have a different form of government with stronger authority, it's still not enough authority. Okay? It's different in civic life. Uh, let's keep on, other things that make progress hard. Yes, Commissioner.
So when I think about what makes progress hard, it's human nature. So when we try or do new and different things, there's fear of loss, there's fear of change, and there's fear of the unknown.
Yeah, I, um, I, I just wanna touch on the fear of loss, because I think it's connected to the fear of change. And change came up earlier. So that, that, that's on, at least on three commissioners' minds, about the status quo, the fear of change. And what, what I would encourage you to think about, from my experience, is I actually don't think your community is afraid of change. I don't think any community is afraid of change. Good change is fine. You know, the federal government sending a hundred million dollars in infrastructure money into your community is gonna change things, and you're gonna like that change. Most people are gonna be okay with that. What we find as we work with organizations and communities and companies around their toughest challenges and biggest aspirations is that it's not that people are afraid of change, because again, people are afraid of good change. They're afraid of the loss that comes with the change you might be pushing, or the perceived loss. Okay? So if, if that law- So if that loss is keeping people, or that perceived loss, might not be real, doesn't matter. Those of us in politics know, it doesn't matter, real or perceived, it's the same in politics and governing, right? If that loss isn't addressed, you'll get people to focus on the status quo. Right? So there's a fear of loss. So what at least Commissioner McKernan is suggesting is that progress on these things will require the type of change that might require some loss. And it'd be interesting to explore what that is. We won't do that tonight, but what does that mean exactly? What else? What makes progress hard? Yes, Commissioner.
I would say unlimited solutions with limited resources.
Okay, keep going there. Unlimited solutions with limited resources. Say more.
As we had a discussion earlier, we all have different solutions, different ideas how to fix the issue. But we have limited workforce, we have a limited funding source, we have just us as limited, as you said, authority to fix the issues in our community. We, all of us, each 10 of us, we can come forward, 11, including the mayor, can come forward with an idea, a solution to fix our homeless issue. But there is limited resources out there to actually get the job done and to alleviate that.
Yeah, well, and I think it connects, though, to what we were just talking about with loss. It might connect. Let me just play here for a minute. Because how we spend our money tells us what we value. And a lot of times, we want to try to value everything. Go ahead, Commissioner. No, I feel like we've known each other forever, but I just met you tonight, for real. So I think there's something going on here. Go ahead. District 7.
Watch your tone, Stites. Once again, Commissioner Stites, District 7. Trying to please everyone. Trying to please everyone. And, you know, and things that we were presented with tonight, you know, if it wasn't an issue where we just say we're gonna drop the mill 1 to 20, I don't know, whatever the number is, and it didn't affect something else, and that didn't affect something else. Do we give raises? Are we able to pave streets or all the things? We want to please everybody. I do. I mean, I want everybody to be happy and be just like we started out with, live, work, and play. And do all the things that people want for us to do. But we just can't. We can't please everyone.
Well, and there's something too about, there's something about timeframe in mind, too. Because you'll have, I think the aspirations and the concerns you listed, if I went out and talked to a community group, I'd get a lot of those same answers. So people aren't happy. So the question is, to make more progress, would we have to perhaps disappoint people in the short term so that in the long term, they're gonna take, some of these things are gonna come off the list? Or are we gonna keep them happy in the short term, or happy enough because we're spreading things around enough that we're saying we value everything? And I haven't studied your budget. I don't, I mean, I'm not, okay, I'm just, you know, you're not unique in the way a lot of, you know, governing systems work, right? You know, so there's a question there about, it gets to that loss, right? If we're gonna go all in to really make something happen, that might mean we can't make this other thing happen. And acknowledging that is hard, and especially difficult as a governing body, knowing that you each have an external stakeholder group that you're accountable to. Just, I'm not telling you anything you don't know, just trying to name it. Because how you then craft goals and a vision to account for some of these dynamics is really important. What else? Yes, Pastor.
It's a tie-in to what was said about fear of loss, also fear of pain. And those are the things that keep people from wanting to change as well. And, you know, how much will it hurt to make, how much will it hurt me? What I put down was a me and my mentality versus we and our mentality. As long as the bad things don't affect my household, everything is fine, and nor am I concerned about how those things affect others in my community. And so as long as I'm comfortable, I'm not, I'm not in pain, I'm not threatened by loss of anything, I don't care about whatever happens in other communities. And I think that's a problem. The last thing is that we have, many of us have an ingrained acceptance of old, comfortable, and at times, negative thinking, whether it be amongst us as leaders, staff, and/or our constituency that we represent. Sometimes we're just comfortable, it's like the expression of the frog that was in the pot of water. They continue to turn the heat up, they not know that there's, that they are now supper.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, go, Commissioner, hop in.
Two things that stick out in my mind, and some of us will remember because we're aged, is when they widened parallel. And there were 300 or 400 homes dispersed. And people really hurting. But it was the best thing at that time. And as Commissioner Burrows was talking a minute ago, when he was walking on the field out there at the racetrack, there were 50 or 60 homes displaced. But that ignited the western end of Wyandotte County, and that's why you have the legends and everything else. So sometimes it hurts good, and sometimes it hurts bad. And thank God, the commission and the state legislators at the time, when all that went down, had a vision. But sometimes that vision can adversely affect others.
Yeah. Yeah, I was a young staffer for Governor Bill Graves when that happened. And I was in charge of the small staff that fielded phone calls and wrote letters back. We were just getting email back then, you know? But and the number of calls from the people who lived in those homes. You know? It's pretty intense, you know? So the idea that there's loss that comes with progress, and it can be hard to figure out how to negotiate that, which we all know. Other thoughts about what makes progress hard? Mayor, you had your hand up a minute ago.
For me, it's a lack of shared division. I mean, a shared vision, a lack of shared vision. Not just amongst the elected body, but amongst staff. And if you go beyond these four walls of the unified government, it's a lack of shared vision in the community. Everybody has their own agenda. People are siloed. As unified as we try and be, there's still a lot of areas where we need to come together and find areas that we can agree on, that we can build on, as opposed to looking at the things that we can't agree on, trying to find that common ground and build on those things that we all can agree on. It's gonna make Wyandotte County better, but just really that lack of a shared vision, to me, is a huge concern.
Yeah, you know, my experience is human systems don't accomplish amazing things without a shared vision. And I understand it's hard to come up with a shared vision in a governing body. I get that. But my experience is also, you gotta be looking for ways you can. You know, you gotta be able to recognize that there are gonna be differences, but if you don't coalesce around a vision that can mobilize at least most of you, amazing things just aren't gonna happen. I mean, that's, it's just not. It's an ingredient. We only, we're gonna end on time. I promise. Yeah, Commissioner.
Very, very quickly. What I wrote down, and I think what we all kind of hinted at, was competing and conflicting priorities, both at the commission level as elected officials and within our community, within the same neighborhood, right? Can have two homes, and they want two different things. But along with that, what I haven't heard us really talk about is the inability to compromise, right? To say, I may not get the whole pie, but I'll get half. And if I can figure out what that half is and be satisfied with that half, if I can live with that half, if that half can make me happy, right, then I can come to the table ready to get things done.
Thank you, Commissioner. No, other thoughts on this question?
Mine, I think it has some similarity to what some others have said. The simple answer, I think, is that because we live in a democracy, and hearing all of our voices is important, consensus can be really difficult. And Commissioner McKernan and I have said this many, many times, and Commissioner Stites spent many years as a community-oriented policing officer, and I spent a lot of years organizing neighborhoods. And what we say is neighborhood work is messy. It's messy, messy work. And I think that's a part of why progress is hard. But I would also say that this community, over the last 25 to 30 years, has seen tremendous progress. And the community that existed 30 years ago is not recognizable today. So progress is hard, but it is possible with a sustained vision. And that vision was, we are not going to live this way anymore. I mean, period. Codes, crime, delinquent taxes, over and over and over again. And we had that vision, and we put resources into those things, and we still do today. And that is, I think, a large part of the progress we've seen here. So, and I think, I mean, having someone that helps you believe that there's a better way, whatever that way is, you know, certainly helps bring others to consensus around an idea.
I want to, in this last couple of minutes, knowing that this is the beginning of the conversation, not the end of the conversation. And please take Tina's phone call and my phone call when we call you. Yeah, yeah. Put it in your phone now. No, this is live streamed. I don't want everybody to have my number. No, it's the beginning of a conversation, literally with us, but also among yourselves. And it's the beginning of a process, as the mayor was saying, the beginning of a process. Eventually, it's gotta get to things like a budget. It's gotta get to things like initiatives and policies. But the idea here to think about is, if what you all just said is that progress is hard, any budget you pass, any policies you pass, you're gonna pass with the idea that they're designed to make progress on these concerns or towards these aspirations we talked about. Okay? You're gonna connect, whether you fix that bridge, you're gonna connect that to this concern of infrastructure. Right? You're gonna connect it all. So the idea here is, while you're also, while you're thinking about the policies and the budget and how to make this work financially, if you, as commissioners, don't also think about, how do you go about all that in a way that reflects the opposite of what you just described, right? So you said, what makes progress hard? We're not making communal decisions. So how do you do it in a communal way? If you don't, my guess is you're gonna contribute to the status quo. Right? Other things, need others to buy in. How do you go through this process? The manager talked about the three-legged stool of a good process. The fear of loss. How do you create a process that gets people to talk about the loss involved? And there will be loss if you want game-changing progress. There will be things you might have to give up, and it might just be your comfort. That's what it might be. It might be your comfort, to your point, Pastor. The inability to compromise. So if the inability to compromise is getting in the way of game-changing progress, one of the things we care most about, how do you create a process to get you to a set of policies and a budget that prepares people for the compromise that'll be necessary? All of this is stuff that we call the leadership stuff, which, that's why you all get paid the big bucks, right? We have literally 60 seconds left. So I think I'll give the final word, Madam Manager, to you. The last thing I'll say, I appreciate you inviting us into this process. And then if you want to give the final word to anybody else, you can do that, too, by the way. We can do that. We can just trade the final word around, knowing that we only have 60 seconds left. But I appreciate the conversation tonight. I appreciated being here for the conversation before this conversation. I appreciate the passion in this room, from all of you, from the different perspectives. And my guess is, if we could go back and watch the tape, we could think about how these ideas that we've been talking about now connect to the conversation before. And that's really your task, is how to bring these ideas alive in your work together. And we're honored to play a small part in helping you do that. Helping you find your way to a vision and ultimately policies and procedures and budgets. Madam Manager.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for starting that process of really convening that three-legged stool of policymakers, elected officials, staff, as well as the community. We're gonna be going out into the community. You'll be hearing from Mr. O'Malley. And we'll be looking to try to gain from you your thoughts on whether or not this will is where you'd still like to be. Any closing comments?
Thank you, Administrator, and thank you for your facilitating this conversation. And thank all the commissioners for the information you put forward. I think it was a real good spirited debate. This was all by design, it was intentional, to get the type of conversations and ideas put out on the table. So as we move forward through our budget process, as we engage our constituents, which are the awesome folks that live here in Wyandotte County, we can kind of do some things and get to that shared interest. And hopefully, you all can make some decisions that are community-driven, that we all know. I know everybody here at this table that's elected. I know our staff who works hard to support everything that we do. Every day, I see them at work, including those that aren't here, our public servants. Everybody wants a better Wyandotte County. And so what does that look like? That's what that conversation is gonna be moving forward, as we really talk about this budget cycle. So thank everyone for being here, and thank all those that watched, and be safe and be blessed. Thank you.